Meeting, we'll go ahead and invite Pastor Timothy Clark from Celebration Church to give the opening prayer, followed by the pledge.
All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have tonight, Lord, to help better our city, Lord. I thank you for those men and women who serve the city and the constituents here, Lord, and I just ask God for your favor over their lives. And most importantly, God, we ask for wisdom and discernment tonight, Lord, as they decide matters that will affect us as citizens and the city. And, Lord, I pray most importantly that they would follow your will, Lord, and honor you in all that they do. And, Father, we just thank you for it, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, council, the first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the March 14th regular city council meeting and the March 14th work session.
Motion approved.
You've got a motion for approval?
Second.
And a second? Any further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. Just a few things. First, I want to thank everybody for their efforts on arts and crafts. We had such a great festival, and I heard from a lot of the businesses downtown that they just had record sales last weekend, so really appreciate all the work that Public Works and the Police Department and Page and Sherry Swartz in particular, you know, put into arts and crafts and working with that committee to make that a successful event. The other thing is wanted to also thank Bobby Hall and his staff, the ground staff, for the Fife Golf Tournament this weekend, this past week on Friday. Again, a beautiful day and just a lot of people out the course. I think they had close to 170 golfers for, in two different flights, so that was a great day also. The audit has been completed and is on our website. Kim Creach and her staff have completed that, and you'll be hearing more about the audit in April. Kim then worked really hard on that, her and Iceland, to get that prepared, so thank you to them. And then, again, the Church Street Infrastructure Project, we're continuing to work on that with the closure of Fairhope Avenue and Church Street. We know that we're impacting, you know, traffic through there and trying to be the least disruptive we can be to those businesses in that area. We continue to look for ways to make improvements, to make sure pedestrians know that that sidewalk's open, that we have made it really easy to access by the way we put up fencing and crosswalks, so hope people will, you know, patronize those businesses and make sure they're just, you know, continuing to support local business downtown. And Jessica and Richard are doing a great job communicating with everybody and making sure that that project is running smoothly, so, again, appreciate what they're doing. And then, this week, we will also celebrate the retirement of Terry Holman with our gas department, so if you see Terry around town, thank him for his service to the city and just wish him well in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before, the next item, I just wanted to let y'all know we are going to remove item number 23 from the agenda tonight, so at this time, we will open the floor to public participation. We've got two public hearings, so this will be for agenda items seven through 22, if anyone wishes to come forward and address the council. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the floor and move on to council comments. Councilmember Burrell?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff, Paige, you and your staff, and really, really everybody, the utilities, the Public Works, the Police Department, everybody that pitched in to make Auction Crafts, the success that it was. The council was responsible for the weather from Friday afternoon on, so I think we got that right. No, but thanks to all the people that made it a great success. Mayor, thanks for all your efforts, and I had more than a few people, you know, compliment you on your participation, and I know that's dear to you and has been for a long time, so thank you.
Right, Councilman Martin?
Well, I'll piggyback off of Jack. I'm not going to extend on that, but my same thoughts go out to all the people that are involved in the Arts Festival. I also want to kind of give a shout out to a seven-year-old young lady that put a letter in my mailbox. She was concerned about the owls and the way we cut the colony grounds. And so I got a letter from a seven-year-old that's taking care of her civil duty, and I want to give a shout out to Ms. Ella Morgenstern, and I wrote her back and told her that we had a plan on how to cut that colony, so the owls will have a home.
What did she say in the letter?
Oh, okay.
At the school the other day.
Okay, yeah, and she was the president at the school the other day, because, but anyway, I'll give her a shout out. So we definitely want to keep that in mind. And, but that's about it, man. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
Just want to recognize two birthdays. Number one is my most perfect, wonderful five-year-old daughter who turned five yesterday.
Happy birthday, baby.
And second, not to be outshined by my perfect five-year-old daughter, is an early birthday wish for Mayor Sherry Sullivan.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
That's all I got.
All right. Councilman Bean?
I'd like to shout out my grandson, turns six, so I might have to introduce him. I might have to introduce him. You're a five-year-old, what do you think about that? I think we had a great Arts and Crafts Festival, it was my favorite time of the year, and I think it was a job well done, and I'd like to appreciate, I want to give a thanks to everybody that helped put that on.
And I think y'all pretty much said it, but also a big thank you to the volunteers for the Arts and Crafts Festival, to Fife and Bobby Hall for the mayor's tournament the other day, raised over $60,000, and also a happy birthday to Mayor Sullivan.
I got to go back now. Happy birthday to my wife, which was in the off week, so happy birthday Patty. We're going to all one-up everybody here. Her birthday was last week.
Boy, you got all the birthdays covered here.
Hey, I'm good. There's a cake in the bag.
All right, sounds good. All right, at this time, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Hunter for public hearing. He's got a couple of these. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. The first item that we have as a public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning code. It's CZ 21.17. This is going to be familiar to council. This is to add into the regulations of our central business district a subsection for rooftop terraces. This, and it's kind of on the screen is what section that is, Article Five, Special Districts, and then CBD. And then, as you move down in uses, is where we propose this subsection. And this came to you a few weeks ago, a few meetings ago, from the planning commission that had recommendations, and there was just enough changes to kind of push it out, recommended changes, that we had to re-advertise this. And most of those were in the highlighted section at the bottom for temporary structures. So what I'd like to do here is just kind of read A 1 through 3 as they're stated, all the way to 3A, and then I've got a slide for each of these amendments we can discuss. So rooftop terraces are proposed to be allowed as an accessory use for all lots, is on B2 in the CBD. The exceptions, or the application of the standards are 1 through 4. They are still, have to meet the 40-foot height limits, except for the exceptions we'll discuss future. The outer boundary of that still has to have protections, meaning building code, that's a, it's a little redundant, but just want to make sure people know that as they're designing. And then, for rooftop terraces located in top three-story buildings, the, for the purposes of our zoning ordinance, the rooftop terrace shall not be considered a story. That's just to clear up how a building code defines things in the zoning ordinance, because we do not allow four-story buildings within the CBD. So from B forward, I've got a separate slide, and what I've done is struck through the way it was originally proposed and highlighted as what we've made the amendment to. So within 3, we do allow, we are proposing to allow five-foot extra for elevators and stairwells, so that would be up to 45 feet, supposing that, and their associated mechanical equipment. But that is requiring those to remain under 7.5% of the total square footage of the rooftop. And we kind of struggle with this. It's hard to really perfect this language, but I want to make sure what the intent here is with those. They're not to be, those towers for elevators and staircases are not to be at the forefront of the building. They're to be pushed back behind, you know, back of house as much as possible. So the language we landed on as a proposal was, shall not be viewable from sidewalks located in public rights away that abut the building at the ground level, and shall be a minimum of 10 foot from any lot line. And we've got a couple, we discussed this in the past, we've got a couple of just rough drawings to explain that one if we need to. Section 3C was for structures other than those used for elevators and stairwells, may be opening, closed, but shall not cover more than, as we originally proposed, 33%. Based on council feedback, we've changed that to 25% of the total footage of the rooftop. And again, these are just for those on top of third floor. And then, the kind of meat of the changes, temporary structures such as tents, awnings, and umbrellas were prohibited on rooftop terraces. We've allowed those, but put some pretty strict guidelines on how long, how those are built as standard there, and we need those sealed by a structural engineer when building permits. The design of the building has to incorporate how those are going to be used, how long they can be up, if there is any damages, there shall be a hold harmless on file for each of those that should be, we see approved in the future. So that was the teeth of that conversation. I'll leave these just in case we have conversations. And then finally, in the defined terms of rooftop terraces, terrace is defined so that we can refer to it within that section. Really, the couple of things to take note from here, it is intended to be an outdoor amenity area, it is accessory to the primary use of the building, and then individually-owned and operated businesses can't be a part of the, things go hand in hand. If it's accessory to the primary use, can't be independently owned and operated of what's happening, at least on the floor, some of the floors below. So with that said, staff doesn't see problems with this proposal as it states and does recommend approval. I didn't leave the votes of the planning commission on, because that was, the language is tweaked a little bit. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I want to introduce the ordinance, please.
At this time, I was going to say, at this time, we need to go ahead and introduce the ordinance. So ordinance has been introduced. Councilmembers, do y'all have any questions for Hunter before we open the floor? Any question? All right. Ordinance has been introduced, let's go ahead and open the floor for the public hearing. If anyone would like to address this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one, I guess we'll go ahead and close the floor, but councilmembers, do y'all have some questions or conversation with Hunter related to this item?
I just want to thank you for all the work and having to go through the, you know, the minor, I thought minor, changes, but probably worthwhile to re-advertise, and it's been a long time, you know. I think, I think we got it right, though. I think I really did.
Okay. All right, well, go ahead and let this lay over for a future meeting, and thank you, sir. Next item up is a public hearing. This is an ordinance, amend zoning ordinance number 1253, ordinance to, ordinance amendment zoning code 22-02, proposed amendment to existing planned unit development known as the Reserve at Fairhope Dominion Senior Living of Fairhope LLC. Property is 16.62 acres and is located at the southwest intersection of Greeno Road and Volanta Avenue in Fairhope. Would someone like to introduce this ordinance?
I introduce the ordinance.
All right. Thank you, sir. Hunter, if you would go ahead.
Sure. And this is also something you're familiar with. There was an amendment to the, on the corner of Volanta and Greeno Road, you see that site under construction, so I won't belabor what you're seeing being constructed now, which is the majority of the site, but just for reference, it is comprised of the property shown on the screen that is now a PUD and the area as it was before construction began. Basically, what is proposed here was more, not the big building, but the cottages as were originally proposed, and then the addition of a professional office, and we'll discuss that use, but that was the details, kind of showing how that laid out. There was also some cosmetic and infrastructure-related improvements. So if the pond, for example, that fronts Greeno Road, it has a more organic shape and is not linear, it's larger and has been turned into a wet pond, so it will be more of an amenity. The layout of the cottages or duplexes were, is a little bit more efficient, both for the installation of the infrastructure, it's actually saving greens, providing more green space in this plan than was previously approved, and that is with the addition of the professional office pad. So the site plan is proposed and reviewed by planning commission is on the screen. The, this is the approved, currently approved, so you can see the different, same number of units as far as the cottages go, but you can see kind of how those changes affect the aesthetic of the site. Hoyle Avenue is being opened and improved by this development, and the professional office pad, as it's called, it's not a lot, it's, the pad is here on this site. So just kind of playing with some of the numbers, the existing and approved PUD provides 26% green space. The revised and proposed plan provides 30.1%, as we talked about, the ponds are converted to wet ponds, which makes up most of the difference. And the professional office site pad, as it's called, while it's not a lot, will provide within that site 25% green space. This is more of a use, conceptual green space plan. You can see what's used as green. A lot of this space provides additional amenities for the residents, including putting greens and golf carts and clubhouses, and, you know, so if we have questions about those, we can, we can look at that. I can't read it at this scale as I'm winging it, but a lot, you can see some of the callouts of active green space areas within here, and a sidewalk network connecting this and also connecting to the sidewalk and mixed-use trail in front of Greeno. The applicant is still proposing to extend the sidewalk south and provide a signalized crosswalk that can get to the sidewalks at Volanta Park. Just a difference of the green space, what is not being utilized as green space is all the little planting islands. This is actual usable green spaces we like to see. So the professional office pad, that has a couple of things we, we are, there's not an exact use related there, so as part of the PUD, the applicant has proposed for uses, those being a convalescent or nursing home, medical office slash clinic, professional office, or simply leaving it as common open space. The, as staff's looking at that, without knowing what the exact use is, it's kind of hard to determine whether we 100% are behind it or not. So some of those things we do, have proposed to alleviate those risks, is requiring a mandatory site plan review. That'll give us an opportunity, there's a chance that some use, really, that we have, maybe haven't considered, generates more traffic, for example. So at least there's an opportunity to look at that. The PUD as existed, as it exists, has a height limit of 34 feet. For this particular site, we wanted to keep that at 30 feet, that matches B2, the approved urology center, and what else, other things you'll see along Greeno. Councilman Martin did ask a good question, and it, there's a solution. We didn't really consider it here, but it is an option. The medical office use, the clinic specifically, is not an allowed use anywhere within the city. Every one of those has to come to the Board of Adjustment for approval. So, but clinic is broadly defined. That's pretty much anybody that's seeing a significant number of patients, I think the mention there of surgery, and neither, a convalescent and nursing home is also not a use that's allowed by right anywhere within the city. It's obviously allowed within the, this PUD. So if there is an interest, that could be a use allowed with, upon approval of the Board of Adjustment. That would be maybe the way to handle that within the PUD that I don't think would significantly change the layout. We just saw one of those this past month for the urology center just to the south. So that's an option if you want to pursue that, have any questions on that. With that said, staff did recommend approval of this amendment with four conditions. There was some, and actually, the overstory trees, this is kind of redundant as well. They are shown on the plans, for the landscape plans, but overstory trees shall be planted within the 20-foot buffer adjacent to Greeno Road. There was some, some trees kind of cut out with adjacent property to the south. A visual landscape buffer shall be planted along the western property to provide a buffer to those residents on Autobahn Place and shall be maintained in perpetuity. That's already being worked on and planted, this is just a condition to memorialize that. The building height, as I mentioned, of the professional office shall be 30 feet, and a mandatory site plan review shall be required for the professional office building, when and if developed, as conditional for. This did come out of planning commission with a unanimous recommendation to approve. If y'all have any questions, I'll.
Yeah, I have questions, Hunter.
Yes, sir.
That road on Hoya, we're calling it a private road?
No, sir. That, Hoyle has been a public right-of-way for many years. It's just been an unimproved right-of-way.
Okay.
So the.
I saw private in the writing somewhere in here, they're considering that a private road, but, so, be that as it may, coming across, we talked about this, remember?
Mm-hmm.
Are we still concerned or not concerned about that, with that dire into Hoya and cutting across three, four lanes trying to get out?
Yeah. So here's the, the challenge for us, when we first reviewed this, that was discussed and brought up, and we looked at traffic options, and the applicant has submitted to the city funding that will take over, you know, take care of their obligations for any traffic improvements. We did apply for a grant, didn't receive that, hope to apply that next year. So those conversations are certainly, you know, worth having, but it's not something I believe we can make this applicant, you know, we've reviewed this two years ago and had that conversation, and kind of had our.
Yeah. I just want the public to know that we are, we, our eyes are on that, and we're working on it.
Yeah, and that's something that we can, you know, certainly consider in any grants, and we did discuss, actually, with Aldot last week about that, that connection. Hoyle does line up with Dire, and, you know, left turns out of Hoyle could be a challenge.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay.
All right, councilmembers, any other questions for Hunter? Let's go ahead and open up the floor for the public hearing. Anyone would like to, oh, go.
And just FYI, Trey Genright with Jade Consulting is here, and along with Withers with the development.
Good evening, Trey.
Good evening, Trey Genright, Jake Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant Withers is with me as well. This project has come about, a couple of different things have happened since the pub was approved some time ago. Construction costs are rising, and so we're trying to figure out a way to more efficiently build this thing, and so with the less streets, it's able to save some money, quite frankly. And when doing that, we were able to capture some green space, and so there subsequently, a medical office building has come before the city, I think was recently approved, that bookends the corner, on the south corner of Hoyle, and Gaffer, and so we thought that that may be an opportunity to kind of maybe do two projects, give the potential for two projects that could mirror each other and provide a nice gateway right there for a medical facility. We understand the concerns of what uses may go in there, and so the intent was to really restrict that into just those three operations, or just leave it as green space. So, you know, at some point, the market may dictate one use over the other, and if that's the case, then we'll be back before you as the planning commission to get site plan approval. Understand the concern about the civic, the clinic use, and if that's something we need to bring before the Board of Adjustments, just to keep it straight across the line for all uses in the city, then that's fine, too. We're not asking for anything outside the norm. We just wanted to, you know, opportunity there arise, we can make the green space with it, and thought it just, you know, made a better, a better product for the, for the view of 98. So if you've got any other questions, I'd be glad to talk to you about them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for Trey?
No, just coming, I really like the decrease of impervious, you know, surface there. That's, I know it cost, it saved you money, but we like, we like where we have green space and things can drain.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
I had one question. Speaking of the Hoya Road, again, it looks like it may be blacktop-down just to the entrance there on the south side. Did the original plan have that paved road end at that same location, or did it extend all the way to the south, that's going to be the southwest corner of the property?
So, two things. The current plan is exactly as it is right now. The reason we didn't pave all the way to the end of Hoyle is, for one reason, it's fallen under Mr. Martin's comments, is that we talked with the city engineering department about opening that up for additional drainage, it's something that Mr. Green had asked for, and so we've got additional drainage in there. The site plan that you, the city has recently approved for the medical office to the south of us actually connects to that road, makes it more of a curve, and it ties it into their site, and so it's a good terminus point for the public right-of-way to pick up and the private right-of-way to start, is right there in that curve, is how it's dictated, and so our drawings are coordinated with the project to the south of us. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not, but, but the section of city right-of-way that is not being paved, it was actually going to be extra stormwater management, is located in that spot.
The reason I had asked was, it was in the future, if somebody came to the city and said, this road's partially complete, and then the city would have to complete that road, I was worried about what financial commitment that we would be making for our future.
Yeah, there's nowhere for it to go, there's no right-of-way, it's private property, the house to the south side of it, or to the west of it, is actually at the back of their yard, so.
Okay. Thanks, Trey.
Thanks, sir.
And Councilman Burrell, that is something we did look at, all three projects coordinated with drainage, it's also something we do with some of our right-of-ways, so that end does have drainage and conveyance from one side to another, and will hopefully help a lot of the downstream problems that have been plagued us in the past, so. Yep.
All right. Would anyone else in the public like to come address this item? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to speak as a resident and also as the mayor. So I am concerned about that Volanta intersection as we continue to see growth there, and we all know it happens on Friday nights or baseball nights, a lot of traffic coming through there, and that intersection, the median is not wide enough to hold that traffic. We did apply for an A-Trip grant that we did not receive this time. Hunter and I did meet with Aldot last week and discussed that corridor through there. We do hope to apply for that A-Trip grant again, and are hopeful with Aldot, because we were, we received funding for an A-Trip project prior to this one. The people who were in that round also were the ones who were awarded this time, so we're hoping if we submit again that we will get that. But just want the city council to know that if we do not get that funding, at some point, something's going to have to be done about this intersection. I mean, if not, we're going to have some serious accidents and just a lot of traffic jams through there that we're going to need to address, but we are going to do, you know, make every effort to make sure we can get a grant to take care of that intersection.
Yeah, it's a real tricky pulling left out of there.
It is, it's dangerous.
Very.
Yeah, there and there.
Okay. Any other comments, council? Anyone else from the public? All right, let's go ahead and let this lay over until next council meeting. Thank you, sir. Item number seven is a resolution toward RFQ 2-22 to replace the roof of the Ryder's Cottage for the Fairhope Public Library to roof doctors for total cost of $7,500. We did learn that this item is 100% reimbursable through our insurance, so no out-of-pocket.
I move to award the RFQ.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number eight is a resolution to award bid 9-22 for turn lane construction and traffic signal upgrade on County Road 30, Gaffer Avenue at US 98, to McAlany Construction Company LLC for the Public Works Department for total bid proposal of $524,817.
We got to strike this.
We've got to strike this.
Yeah, I know, I was just about to say that. Don't I still have to read it? Or not? I would say, we had some discussion about this in the work session, but as we later learned, Richard came back and said we actually need to reject and rebid this, this particular item. So, council on board with rejecting the bid and putting it back out for rebid?
I move to reject the bid and put it out for rebid and just, you know, for the record to say there was, it was no, nothing to do with the one bid that we received, nothing to do with the company whatsoever. It was just technicality.
Advertising technicality.
Legalities.
All right.
Egality, technicality.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion needed? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, rejected, bid rejected, has passed, so. Item number nine is a resolution toward bid 12-22 to demolition, to demolish the existing block and mortar building at the Valley Street Lift Station, WR Mitchell and Water, for the wastewater and water department for total bid proposal of $247,600. And as Jason mentioned, this, this is not just demolishing the block and mortar building. This is covering the pumps, the controls, coming back with a submersive pump system and the wet well, so it's covering the entire lift station.
So, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to amend this particular resolution to include that language.
Okay. So, that sounds good. So, the-
Yes, sir. Before, before, and I agree with that, but I do want to ask Jason a question. I've been looking at these details as, as we've been, it basically says, the wet well will be lined, new submersible pumps, guide rails, piping and controls installed. Is there going to be a new block wall installed, or is this, so it won't be, it's going to be more open air now?
No, I think they'll see it's controlled now.
Okay.
I second Councilman Martin's motion to amend.
All right.
Yep.
So, motion and a second with amended language. Lisa, do you need specific language on that for?
I've got it.
You got it? Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 10 is a resolution toward-
That was due, that was just to amend that we had-
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
I make a motion, we approved the amended motion.
Trying to be efficient here. Too efficient. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for catching me on that. Item number 10 is a resolution toward the bid for North Drive, Rock Creek Roadway Improvement Project, Asphalt Services, Inc., for the Public Works Department for a total bid proposal of $65,860.65. And as Richard mentioned, this is going to prepare, we've had several patches here on this location. We were, put this out for bid, I think, February of 2020. We know what happened after that. Put, put the brakes on it. We're coming back, and this is to completely, basically rebuild that half a block on, on North Drive. Any questions for Richard? Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Move to award the bid.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 11 is a resolution toward the procurement of the ceiling tile replacement at the James P. Nick Center to boot construction for Community Affairs Department for a total cost of $34,656. I know Paige and Richard both spoke to this, the potential for change if we get into a little bit more where there was, where there was some leakage in the roof, so any, any questions for Paige or Richard?
Did I hear that was also being covered with insurance proceeds?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. And it's 16, it's budgeted as well. I saw a budgeted amount on there, I thought, under 16,000.
All right, so-
I move to award the procurement.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 12 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune Gas Meters, Meter Ertz to replenish inventory for the gas department to be purchased from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company as a sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group and are exempt from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama 1975. The total cost is not to exceed $80,750. Terry covered this in the work session, and this is just replenishing inventory of gas meters. Any questions for Terry?
I move to award the procurement.
Got, got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune Water Meters for the Water Department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply as a sole source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group, and the number of units is 500 meters at $195 per unit with a cost not to exceed $97,500. And Jason mentioned, you know, supplies are low. I think they ran out at some point in the last couple of weeks, so we know we need to go ahead and have these in, in stock and should be delivered in May. Is that what you said, or you ordered them for last May? I missed what that was.
Should be here in May.
Should be here in May, okay. All right, any further questions for Jason?
I move to approve the procurement of another water meter.
Motion and a second. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 14 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of KERS 8700 from Alberti and Blakeney LLC as a sole source distributor for the, for the Water Department and authorizes procurement based on the option from the Code of Alabama. Total cost not to exceed $60,000, and this is the corrosion inhibitor. Any questions for Jason on this item?
I make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item number 15 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of storm drain cleaning in the Stone Creek subdivision to Ranger Environmental for the Public Works Department. Total cost not to exceed $5,580. Richard covered this in the work session, but if anybody has any question for him?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. Item number 16 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of thermo scientific precision low-temperature incubators to replenish inventory for the Water Department to be purchased from Fisher Scientific. The incubators are exempt from formal bid pursuant to Code of Alabama. Total cost not to exceed $5,165.04. This is for the wastewater plant. Any questions for Jason on, on these incubators?
So moved.
All right, we've got a, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like for Councilman Robinson to please explain how these instruments are used.
You'll be waiting quite a while.
Relinquish your time to-
Yeah, I yield my time.
I yield.
To Jason. All right, we've got a, got a motion and a second. And any further discussion, any elaboration? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number 17 is a resolution that the Fairhope City Council hereby accepts a donation from the Fairhope Single Tax Colony on behalf of the Fairhope Police Department that will go towards the purchase of a DARE vehicle, or DARE vehicles to be used by the school resource officers in the amount of $40,000, so gift from Fairhope Single Tax and to be spent on DARE vehicles for the SROs. All right, any questions for chief?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. Motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
What kind of vehicle is that going to be?
Could be like a Honda Civic, a Porsche, we don't know yet. We're working on it.
All right. Take what you can get, I guess. All right, number 18 is a resolution that Mayor Sherri Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute a contract with SafeSpan LLC to provide professional engineering services for biannual bridge inspections for the not-to-exceed amount of $10,400, and this is every two years we're having these bridges inspected.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution that the City Council approves the 100% engineering plans and authorizes their submission to the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and the United States Treasury for Phase One of the Working Waterfront Green Space Project, the Fairhope Municipal Pier and South Beach Park Improvements. The City of Fairhope Subaward Grant from the ADCNR is part of the Resources and Ecosystems Sustainability Tourist Opportunities and Revived Economies of the Gulf State, Gulf States Act, Restore Act. Council members, we discussed this the last couple of weeks in, in public, in work session along with several other meetings, and we've had opportunity for council members to come back and review the project in the council office or council chambers, so any further comments or questions or any discussion on this item? We've talked about it pretty sufficiently.
Yep.
All right.
If Cory's amendments included, I want, I want it vetoed, mayor.
All right, all, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and two seconds. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item 20 is a resolution that the City Council approves the selection by Mayor Sherri Sullivan for professional consulting services of International Code Council for third-party review of construction documents for the Building Department and hereby authorizes mayor to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council. And I know Eric mentioned this was going to be used for Carmel Park Flats, for MAP Center. Occasionally, he likes to send things through here just, just for larger-scale projects through their account at ICC, so any further questions or comments for Eric before?
I have one comment for you, Eric, and that is, thank you for that information that you gave. You know, you've always talked about it being a pass-through cost, but you, you actually put a percentage on there, gave a clearer picture to council, so that was real helpful. Thank you. And it was a real good number, too. Thank you.
All right, any further comments? We've got a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 21 is a resolution that the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to add the job position of lineman and crew leader, grade 25. The City Council approves the job description and grade of pay for the same and to fill with the appropriate person with the pay grade. And this is just creating a job, it's not really creating a net increase in personnel and full-time employees or changing the pay grade necessarily, so mayor covered this earlier. Any questions for the mayor?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I want, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to vote in favor of this, but just to be consistent, sometimes we pass this on to the Personnel Board for Review and sometimes we don't. Did you have a discussion with them? And a discussion is adequate. Okay, very good.
Just so you know, if it's something that's changing drastically, we do take it before the Personnel Board. I think Councilman Boone was there this past week when we discussed one that will come before y'all. If it's something minor where we're just adding like a sentence or two, just, we, I sent it to Diane Thomas, she'll review it, look at it for me, give me any feedback, and then we'll move on from there.
All right, we've got a, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, job, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. Item number 22 is a request from Molly Spain requesting permission to use the sidewalks and grassy area of Utopia Park for Baldwin County Trailblazer Event. It's the Second Annual Chocolate Trail on Saturday, April 23rd, from noon to 5:00, and the alternate rain date would be Sunday from noon to 5:00. If you, if Utopia Park is not available, a secondary request for the event is to be held same time and date at the Orange Street Pier location utilizing sidewalks both north and south of the Orange Street Pier. And the Chalk, Chocolate Trail will utilize the sidewalks in this area for participants to create sidewalk arc as well as a grassy area for event festivities. The event raises awareness to get people out of the trails as well as funds for the Baldwin County Trailblazers, and that's who puts on the walking school bus, so, if y'all are familiar. Any questions for the chief on this request? Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes. This time, item 23 has been pulled, so we will open the floor for public participation.